Hey, Larry, do you want to send out the note to tell everybody that's order?
Everybody, we're about to get started. If you could please settle into your seats. Okay, let's go ahead and get started here.
Can I lower this a little bit or is it fine? Oh, very good. Can it? Can you hear me? No. Now you can hear me, right? No? Now you can hear me? All right, how about, wait a minute. Now you can hear me. Yeah, all right. Very good. Okay, little technical challenges. Welcome, everybody. And today we are celebrating an extraordinary milestone. And I'd like to bring, before we begin all, the recognition of our new board members' extraordinary accomplishments and welcome all of their friends and family. I'd like to bring the inauguration of the Kane County Board members to order, please. And with that, I would, before we begin, though, because I have a very loose script up here. As in, you've got the same thing. I think we've got some elected officials here in the room. And if you could stand and just be recognized, I think I saw Senator Christina Castro in the room. Welcome, welcome. Thank you so much for coming. And I think we have a representative in the room. There he is. Welcome so much. Thanks, Matt. And is there anybody else? Who needs to be recognized? No? Well, family and friends, while we're recognizing people, why don't you all stand? And we can give you a round of applause for supporting the candidates. So how many sleepless nights and candy and other supplies you had to provide for your candidates to bring them down off of the tents and tense time for running probably for 10 months and filling up your living room and garages and refrigerators with volunteer food, yard signs, handouts, research, et cetera, and which some of it may be still lying around your house, which I'm sure as it gets put away. And all of our volunteers who came out to help all of our candidates, thank you so much for your advocacy and for being part of the political process to get these wonderful people elected. We are very gracious for you and much gratitude. So with that, I'd like to now start the actual meeting. And this would be with the presentation of colors and our pledge of allegiance. And I would like to thank the St. Charles American Legion Post 842 for doing this honor. So if everybody could please stand. Gentlemen, when you're ready.
Post colors. Face the flag.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Present, Halt!
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That was lovely. You may be seated. I would like now to bring up Chief Judge Villa for our invocation.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Hopefully you can hear me. Not my voice usually carries beyond a microphone's distance. Welcome to the Kane County Branch Court. For those of you who don't know, I thought I'd provide you just a little bit of irony. This was supposed to be initially the Kane County Boardroom when this building was built out a long time ago, until somebody wisely figured out it's actually not in the county seat. It is in St. Charles. So it was converted into a courtroom, which is why we're convening here today. But welcome. And today, for those candidates who are here today, congratulations. Let me start by saying I recognize that that the political process itself has its ups and its downs, ups and downs. And judiciary, at least as far as, as long as I will be chief judge and involved as the judiciary, tries to stay as far afield from politics as possible. We're the neutral branch of government and should always remain so. But yet I think there are some things that we share in common. Then I thought I'd share them with you today. When I was sworn in, or any other judge who's sworn in, we do by our oath reaffirm our commitment to the trust that the public has placed in us. And we do that both every day, not just when we get sworn in, but every day that we practice in our respective fields. As you do so, I'm going to share with you something that I have had for a long time. I keep a portion of it on my bench or a copy of it on my bench. And I thought I'd read it for you today. May we be grateful. We are blessed today with enough to eat. May we be grateful. We are blessed with clothes to wear. May we be grateful. We are blessed with shelter from the elements. May we be grateful. We are very blessed today. We, may we remember that there are many people who do not have these blessings and maybe be grateful enough to help others when we can. And there's, if there's anything that reminds me some days of my job and what the public trusted me to do was to be grateful and to look out for others, I assure that all of you will be doing the same. 2025 is going to bring new opportunities for you to improve Kane County. It's going to bring challenges for you to overcome. And like all elected officials, you will have that wonderful blessing of something you couldn't possibly anticipate, that you will have to get together with other members and work together to solve. But I assure you, if you remember that you are blessed and stay true to your commitment, you'll serve all of us here in Kane County well. Congratulations.
I have just a few remarks I'd like to share with all of you. Today, as I mentioned before, we do celebrate in a very important milestone, the election of our new county board members. But as any good politician knows, I promise to keep this speech shorter than the waiting time at the security checkpoint at O'Hare Airport. But please feel free to take off your shoes. I extend a heartfelt congratulations to you and your families on this well-deserved achievement. And I really mean that. It was an extraordinary effort for all of you. Earning a position on the Kane County Board is no small achievement. It reflects not only your dedication and hard work throughout the campaign, but also the trust that our residents have placed in you. This trust is a testament to your commitment to fostering a better future for Kane County. As you take on this notable role, you inherit both an opportunity and a responsibility. You have the opportunity to make meaningful changes that can improve the quality of life for our constituents. Your ideas, your leadership, and passion will be pivotal in addressing the challenges we face, from enhancing our infrastructure to supporting public safety. But you also have the responsibility to embrace one of the most important aspects of your new position, the ability to work in a bipartisan manner. Bipartisan is just not working together. It's about finding common ground in pursuit of the common good. In today's political climate, collaboration often takes a backseat. But I truly believe that we thrive when we come together, regardless of party lines. Engaging with colleagues across the aisle will not only foster constructive dialogue, but also lead to inclusive and responsive resolutions. As you embark on this most excellent journey, remember that your position allows you to amplify the voices of those you represent. Listening to your constituents and keeping an open line of communication will be essential in guiding your decisions and all of your initiatives. I am confident that you will serve with integrity and diligence, with the commitment to making our county an inclusive, thriving place for all of our residents. Our constituents are counting on you to do so. We have no other choice. On behalf of all of our residents, from Montgomery to Hampshire, I'm looking forward to working together towards a brighter future for Kane County because we have so very much to accomplish. Congratulations on your well-deserved victory. And now we begin what we're all here for, our oath of office. So Chief Judge Villa?
You'd think I'd remember it all, but I don't.
Something about the Constitution.
Yes, I have, I have one.
The Constitution. One Constitution.
I asked, I asked, if I need a moment.
Detail, ten.
All right, raise your right hand, please. I, please state your name.
I, Corinne Michelle Pierog.
Have been elected to the office of chairman, Kane County Board.
Have been elected to the office of chairman of the Kane County Board.
Kane County, Illinois.
Kane County, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of chairman of the Kane County Board?
Of chairman of the Kane County Board.
To the best of my ability.
To the very best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Congratulations. All right. So we have board members that we need to swear in now. If they could all come up front, please. Yes. Stand behind me, right? Okay, I can come over here.
How many do we have here?
There should be twelve.
Never thought to ask that about mine. It's more, I apologize. All right, ladies and gentlemen, everybody ready with your cameras? I'll try to be out of the way. Let me move over here to the side so that you can see everybody. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, please raise your right hands. Individual hands, I know. All right, I, please state your names. Having been elected to the office of county board member.
Having been elected to the office of county board member.
Kane County, Illinois.
Kane County, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties? A board member?
A board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations to every one of you. Congratulations.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
We're going to get in a group picture.
Do you want to do the group picture now, or you want to, or you want to close out the?
Oh, you want to take, come on. Yeah, let's do that. Can you get us all?
We're going to have to hold you.
And Kane County.
Can we do one funny one?
Sure.
We need one funny one. Oh, no, I did it. One funny one. Michael Robb. One funny, ready? Hundred percent success rate. I'm glad. All right, ready? Everybody, funny one.
Congratulations. All right, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to dismiss this wonderful inauguration ceremony. We'll be reconvening. We're not, the board members will continue their meeting at one o'clock this afternoon at Building A for their orientation. And look forward to seeing you there. And with that, I'd like to dismiss our color guard. And with that, I, please send them a round of applause.
Detail, one step forward. Right. And salute. Ready? Two. Our.
So I'd like to get one more picture of the full board for all the newly elected and the currently elected board members who are here before you leave, so we can have that photograph to document the beginning of two more years, two more amazing years. And with that, please take pictures, enjoy. There's treats back there and coffee, camaraderie. Introduce yourselves to one another if you haven't had a chance to meet. And I'll, I'll see you all at one o'clock. But if we could bring all the board members up here, please, for a photo.
Yeah, we're in recess.